To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank you all for coming. So we have the approval of the minutes, two times. Any...
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the September 5th work study. Yeah, September 15th, sorry.
I sent out a correction on that, my fault.
Second. I have a motion in the second. Courtney, can you please call the roll?
Rick Danleer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Aye, the motion's been passed five to zero, thank you. The second set of minutes, please.
I move that we accept the minutes of the council meeting on September 15th, 2021.
Second. The motion in the second. Courtney, can you please call the roll?
Rick Danleer. Nancy Levitt. Chris Gerald. David Winters.
Aye.
Aye, motion's been passed five to zero, thank you. Next on the agenda is public comments. Mark?
We have no request to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you. Now we have the public meeting. First thing is an honor for the council to set this award to this person. It's proclamation to Connie Lawson. For her service. Huh? No.
Are you sure about that?
Yeah, oh, alright. Proclamation, a proclamation by the Danville Town Council to honor Connie Lawson. Whereas Connie Lawson is a native of Danville, Indiana, and is a graduate of Danville High School. And whereas Connie Lawson served as clerk of the Circuit Court of Hendrix County from 1989 to 1996. And whereas Connie Lawson served in the Indiana State Senate from 1996, 2012. And made history as the first woman to serve as a majority floor leader. And whereas Connie Lawson served as Indiana Secretary of State from 2012 to 2021. Making her the longest-serving Secretary of State in history to date. Whereas Connie Lawson served as past president of the National Association of Secretaries of State and honorary governor of the Richard G. Lugar Excellence in Public Service Series and the honorary chairwoman of the Lupus Foundation of Indiana. And whereas Connie Lawson has made significant contributions to the safety and welfare of citizens by protecting them from scams and modernization voting procedures. Now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed by the virtue and authority vested in the town council of the town of Danville, Indiana, to do hereby proclaim thanks, recognition to Connie Lawson. Connie Lawson for her service to our community, our state, and our nation. In witness hereof, we have hereto set our hand and cause the seal of the town of Danville, Indiana, to be affixed this sixth day of October here, 2021. It's been an honor to have you in our town, ma'am. If you'd like to come up. We're just gonna sign it for you? So it's legal, you can get...
Comment, Mr. President? Yes. Wanted to make sure I had permission to speak from my old senate days, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President and members of the town council. Let me just first say, thank you, it's an honor to be invited here and thanks for being patient, Tom, to find a date for this proclamation. But I'm gonna give it all back to you. You know, I came to Danville the summer before my freshman year in high school. I was the second of eight kids, and believe me, there was no extra money. And the community embraced Connie Lawson and her family. And I would say, because of the strength of the community and the families that lived here, it gave me the opportunity to do the things that I have done. So thank you, and I hope you'll continue to be that welcoming and warm to someone else. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Connie.
Thank you, Connie.
Connie, come on in. Connie Jack said he wanted his name on it. You're allowed to go now.
Because I have to get a copy of the proclamation and then get it to her, so...
I can bring it home to her. She wants to go to a soccer game.
I know, and Lisa will be very prompt, I'm sure.
England's playing Germany, and she wants to see that.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
You'd like, Mr. President?
Pardon?
We can move forward if you'd like.
Okay, thank you very much. B, agent of record selection, town council.
So, as you recall, we were provided seven wonderful presentations from agents wanting our business. And tonight, it would be preferred if we could make a decision so that they all know and we can get started with the business of whatever we need to do to make sure the town's covered.
Alright, any comments?
Well, I was impressed with all of the presentations. And I was just blown away that there were seven of them. And, you know, I really liked the big companies because, you know, I think we're moving forward. And I think that, in my opinion, just my own personal opinion, if we wanna just maybe put that in our back pocket for a while, I'm thinking it might make more sense to stay with Bill Whalen, with NFP. Because he, you know, that's the company that's been...
With us.
With us for a while, and so he's taken over for the last year or two.
Anybody else?
I would just second what Nancy said, that I think that, you know, all of the agents had done a great job of providing us with the information that we were looking for. And I know that it's ultimately a very tough decision.
So, Mr. President, what I would recommend after you have your discussion is, is that a motion be made, seconded properly, and then a vote be taken, if that's what you choose to do.
Okay. Well, I would like to say that I'm happy with the people that we have, NFP. And I do agree that all the rest of them are very professional. Alright.
And shall I make a motion to accept the presentation of NFP and keep them as our agent of record for insurance?
Have a second?
Second.
The motion in the second. Courtney, please take the roll.
Aye.
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 David Winters.
Aye.
Aye, the motion's been passed five to zero, thank you very much.
We would like to thank all the agents that did submit proposals. And hopefully you'll come back and see us when we do this again. Thank you.
C, Clearwell Tank Contract Signature. Banning Engineering.
I believe everything's been approved at this point, just needs your signature, Tom. I've got four copies of the contract documents and...
Yes, speaking to the microphone, please.
Sorry, I have four copies of the contract documents. And we can sign them now, or I can stick around to the end, whatever's easiest for you.
I prefer to go ahead and do it now, if everybody's okay with that, because that way, we know it gets done.
Right.
We can just take these out.
Okay.
If you'll follow me and show me where he's supposed to sign.
You're not gonna read it all to us?
If it has been voted on and approved, no, you don't need to do it again.
I forgive you.
Is this, is this just the president's signature? No! There or here?
I can mark malls red, but... I can't find that other either.
Right here?
No wonder I didn't...
You chose, you chose not to read it.
It's only been 14 months.
Hey, no wonder.
Yeah, well...
Chat's the funniest thing I've seen all day.
Oh, what a hoot. Oh, man, I need a recess.
We're not supposed to laugh. No, we gotta be so super serious.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, D. Be heard, street closure.
Good evening.
Scares on the Square is a new event this year.
Your name and address?
I'm sorry, Ann Johansson, with Downtown Danville Partnership.
Thank you.
Scares on the Square is a new event this year on Friday, October 29th. It's from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. So this is, the partnership is joining forces with Danville Kiwanis, the library, and the community education, Danville Community Education Foundation. This event will cap off the Scarecrow Festival, which is happening right now through the rest of the month. So we'll be announcing the winning scarecrows at this event, the beginning. And then we're also inviting local businesses and homeowners to participate by giving prizes for the best decorated porch, jack-o'-lantern, and business window. After those are announced, we'll begin a costume parade on Marion Street. There'll be live music, food, activities for kids, we're doing scary short films, The Royal, Spooky Stories at the Library, and a golf cart parade. So everything's free, and we've invited local service organizations as well to set up tables for information. And the community, Danville Education Community Foundation is doing a fun run and 5K in conjunction with the event. The fun run begins at 6:00 and the 5K is at 8:00. The starting line for both of those will be here at Town Hall. So in your packet, you should have received maps for both the event on the square and the course for the runs. That shows the streets that will be affected and used for both events. So we'll be working with DPW on the logistics, but I'm just coming before you tonight to answer any questions about the event, ask permission to hold them, and for the closure of the affected streets.
Other than social media, is there any notices that go out to any of the affected business owners in the downtown area?
We meet monthly, so they're aware of it, yeah.
And this is a Friday night?
Friday night.
Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion for the street closures for the Downtown Danville Partnership.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Courtney, please call the roll.
Rick Danleer. Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye, motion's been passed five to zero, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
E, presentation, web design.
So, a little background on this. Our IT committee has been pushing stuff forward, and one of our major items was to look at the website, update it, make it more interactive. And we went through a bunch of webinars, we kinda picked a company, and we started to move forward. And then a group from Leadership Hendrix County reached out to us, and they're looking at doing more of a global, meaning the county, idea where we all work together. And so they are here to present that to you. Jared Wade.
Good evening, council.
Jared.
Evening.
Evening.
Name and address.
Yes, Jared Wade. I live at 3030 South State Road 267, Plainfield, Indiana 46168. Good to see you all again. I am here with Angela.
Angela Depp, 7686 Barberry Court, Brownsburg, Indiana.
And we are here representing our Capstone group from Leadership Hendrix County. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Leadership Hendrix County. David, you are not in your head.
Class of 2019.
Ah, there you go, fantastic.
2018.
Class of 2018.
2019 was the best one, though, I'm sure. Two's a bigger number.
Class of 2021, best-looking class ever, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna go against it.
I'm not arguing.
What a way to kick things off, right? So anyway, we were tasked with one of the different portions of the 2019 Hendrix County assessment that was put together by the HCCF, which is the Hendrix County Community Foundation. And the number three thing that most folks here in Hendrix County were frustrated with was the lack of transparency and lack of open communication between the government and everybody out there. I'm not gonna go into the entire spiel of what we did, but to try to shorten it down for you. Our Capstone group went to Facebook primarily and shared a survey asking, "How do you want to be communicated to? How do you want government officials, elected officials, town managers, so on and so forth, to communicate to you?" And they said, "We want to be notified by email or by text message notification if you can't call us." We all agree that phone calls to every single person is next to impossible, but a notification system would be extremely handy in case anything were to happen. Let's say, social media goes down, like Facebook, a couple days ago. Your website, and when I say "your," I'm talking about websites in general, became the primary means of communication to the community. Facebook at any point in time, Instagram at any point in time, Twitter, so on and so forth, can shut down whenever they want, whenever they want. They can charge you whatever they want, whenever they want. So what we're trying to do is create a system and an access point, a better future-proofed access point for a website that is going to be able to grow, just like Danville's growing right now. So once we figured out that notifications and those direct communication points was what the community wants, then we started trying to find out a good platform that was going to take care of those needs. And we actually found a website in Texas that checkmarked all those boxes. And as we started the communication process with Civic Plus, we actually found out that Plainfield and Brownsburg already use their services as well. Flash forward a few months of negotiations and talks back and forth between myself and Civic Plus, and we've actually figured out a way to incorporate and combine all of the different calendaring systems through Civic Plus. So basically, what that means is if everybody gets on board onto Civic Plus, and when I'm saying "everybody," I'm talking about all the towns that are in Hendrix County, as well as Hendrix County's website itself. Through their calendaring system, Danville events will show up on the county website. Avon events, Plainfield, Brownsburg, all of the different towns. It will be a nice central communication hub. On top of that, the notifications, the text messages, the emails, things of that nature, are going to be accessible for the residents here of Danville. So they're going to be able to sign up for text message notifications for, let's say, there's going to be a parade going around in a couple weeks. They could actually get notifications on, maybe it's a rainout, or if there's a DPW emergency. If the parks have to shut something down due to an emergency, they can be notified, and they can be notified specifically about what they want to be notified about. That is what the community is craving. They want to be kept up to date with what they want to be kept up to date with, not a general broad scope. So Angela is actually from Brownsburg, and I thought that her viewpoint of being a resident and going through the process would be extremely beneficial.
Thanks. Like Jared said, the wonderful thing is, as residents, we get to choose what information we want to find out about. So like Jared said, we want it to be cohesive, where all of the information is available, but residents get to choose what information they want sent directly to them. So if we have people that only want to know about Danville events, only want to know about Danville road closures, only want to know about Danville anything, they can click specific things. And I actually did have an experience with this as a resident, as, I'm actually on the Brown Township Board as well. And as a member of the Brown Township Board, we fund the fire territory. And once a year, we have a joint meeting. Well, I had signed up for the notifications for the town of Brownsburg meetings. No one had alerted me, called me to tell me, "Hey, we have a meeting coming up." But guess what? I got that notification via text sent directly to me, saying, "Hey, there's a meeting going on." Now I did have to go find out why I didn't know about it beforehand, but that's a whole other story. But I found out about it. There were other residents in the community that were able to find out about it because it was sent directly to them. And I was able to show up to the meeting and get the business done. So that's just my personal experience with how well it works. Brownsburg did just come on to this within the last year, and we know how the last year has been quite chaotic. So I do think they need to do a little bit more advertising with the community as a whole, getting more and more residents. But every day, they're getting more residents in there, picking out, "I want to know when the town council meetings are, I want to know when zoning meetings are," and all of that, so they can find out about specific meetings, so...
And that brings us to you five right now, which is what we're presenting, and what we would like to do is encourage you to accept Civic Plus. There's a contract that I believe Will has sent out to everybody. It's a two- or four-page contract that gives all the details for everything. Mansfield, Texas is purely an example. The streamlined approach, the big facet that we have to keep in mind is we can't continue to live 10 or 15 years in the past when it comes to websites. As Danville continues to grow, the families are going to become younger. Almost everybody, for the most part, lives on one of these. And navigating most eGov or core BT sites, which you have a core BT site which used to be eGov. eGov was bought out. Town of Avon currently has an eGov site, and it's transitioning over to a Civic Plus. It's next to impossible to navigate it on a mobile device. Not only will you be able to navigate it from the resident's point of view, but those that are responsible for maintaining the website are going to be able to make updates mobily. It's actually designed mobile-first, and completely mobile-responsive, completely ADA, compliant for digital purposes and all that good stuff. But whoever that might be, if that's Will, or if that's Matty, they're gonna be able to do that from an iPad, from a phone, and get those updates out to your community as effective and as efficiently as possible. Other than that, I just, I love the way that it feels. I love the way that it showcases your different departments. You can have different feels for your departments, but it still has the same branding. You still have that same name of Town of Danville, but you have different colors. You can use that to your advantage on the website. I've spoken for a very long time, so I'm going to stop and answer any questions that you might have.
I've got a question.
Yes.
Do, I love this idea, but do you know if Hendrix County is gonna change to one of these websites?
Yeah, so we've been working with Hendrix County. They are in talks still. Hendrix County is a little bit slower to get this in front of them. But we've been communicating with their commissioners, with their council, with their IT department, because they're getting ready to do a website refresh as well. And part of the process of going to Hendrix County is being able to say, "Plainfield's on, Brownsburg's on, Avon's on." We can say "Danville's on," it's going to be a significantly huge help for them to be able to say, "No, there's a legitimate reason for us to jump on this as well." We've had discussions financially. They know they have the same contract, theirs is a little bit different, of course, financially. But they've seen the numbers, and they don't have any issues with that from what they've told me.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I'll give a comment and then a question. I think we should table this and look into this a little more, but it's $37,000 commitment over two years. Where would these funds come from?
Is it 37?
It's down to 32 regardless. I don't have an answer, Mr. Winters. It's something I'd have to do some research with Quirk Treasurer's Office to see what their recommendation would be. Will, do you have a thought? I know we have some IT money, but I don't, we normally account for all of it in a year, so...
Yeah, I mean, as far as the IT committee was going, I mean, we were looking at doing it probably next year as our, that was our goal, but this came faster than that. There's also another element that we would like to have in it as well, which is part of the agenda builder side. So that month, that monthly will be higher, but it's a really important piece that we want to have to streamline it for the citizens and for you, and the interactive piece that we lack right now. But, yeah, I mean, we've already been looking into it, we've done a bunch of webinars, and we did decide on Civic Plus even before they came into the picture. They're just looking from a more global picture at what to do, so that's kind of your decision there.
I think Dave has something there. It sounds like you want to add something to it. So maybe we should table this till next meeting. Is that long enough?
I appreciate you guys coming out. I too believe that we should table it as well. Take a good look.
You guys? So how do we take care of this? Consensus, or?
No, table it. Any further action? That's why I left you the option of tabling it for tonight.
Yeah, it sounds really good. We just want to tidy it up and make sure we're getting it all together at once.
Our Leadership Hendrix County class is gonna be ending next month, so we will try our best to come back and answer any questions. But I do have full hope that Will will have all of the details that he needs to give you answers from a technical point of view to move forward. Our job was more, hey, if we all work on this together, can we get a discount on it? We did, we got a very substantial discount on it, and we just want you to take advantage of it, and...
So we have time to do that?
That I can't promise. That is something that Will has, that has been handed off to Will now. And as far as my, I can't promise that that discount will stay in place. This has been something that we've literally been working on.
How much is the discount?
For Hendrix County, it's $50,000. For Town of Danville, I'm gonna say it's $5,000.
And you're the one running all this?
I was like, he's pretty good at negotiating.
I'm bigger than you, you know.
You could definitely take me, I have no fears about that, no fears at all. It's just, this is a passion for those of us in our Capstone group. You heard me last month, I have a passion for communications and transparency and making sure that the residents know exactly what's going on. But I also have a passion for technology, and this kind of meshes both worlds. Is I want the residents to be able, no matter where you're at, if you're in Danville, Avon, Plainfield, Brownsburg, Hendrix County in general, I want them to be able to trust those in the leadership position. And the best way that you can do that is by being able to give it easy access, to eliminate that excuse of, "Well, I can't find it," or "I don't know where it's at." You make it easy, you make it simple, you make it straightforward and to the point, and they're gonna become your supporters versus antagonists.
So you're asking politicians to trust?
Tom, I'm asking you to trust me, my friend.
Well, I will have to say, Jared, you're a great emcee. I was at that breakfast this morning, so...
Oh, wonderful.
Great job.
Wonderful, thank you, appreciate it. And just to go off, again, I'll wrap up with this. Will was talking about a few additional modules. Those modules are huge elements that Civic Plus does have. I think specifically looking at Civic Rec, which is their Parks and Rec module. These are all additions that you don't have to have, but they integrate directly with the service, which makes the streamlined process much easier, which makes the training process much easier for your team. So, yeah, Will's gonna do a fantastic job giving you all the details and answers. And if there's anything else that I can do, Will has my contact information. We just became friends on Facebook, so he can now track me down anywhere and everywhere.
Official now.
Yeah, it is, it is, but...
Facebook went down, my wife took our dinner and showed it to everybody on the block. Sorry, it got cold.
No, it's all good. Any other?
Thank you for your time.
Wonderful, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, F. Okay, F. Presentation, Establishment of the CDC.
So we've asked Beth from Taft Law to come and do a presentation and you had an opportunity to have a briefing on this during our work-study session. And so what it will come down to tonight is, and you can either table or vote, but you're basically going to be voting on, is this something you want to start the incorporation process? Any, did I say that right, Beth?
Correct.
Thank you.
I think it's a no-brainer.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make a quick comment and maybe just ask one other quick question for clarity in that this CDC is not replacing an RDC, it's more of a tool to work side-by-side with the RDC.
Correct. Yeah, the RDC, the EDC and a CDC, they all work hand-in-hand together, but they don't replace each other.
Very good, very good. I have no problem with that.
No NBC?
Not yet. You want to create one?
ABC?
He's on it tonight, isn't he?
Do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we establish a CDC for the Town of Danville.
Second it.
I have a motion and a second. Courtney, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's been passed five to zero. The town has a nice new tool. Thank you.
Mr. President, can you give us just a second?
Yes.
Do we need to make it tonight or when we actually do?
I would refer that it would be appointed by the mayor to say town manager.
It's actually been, they've been appointed by the council president. Will's received those.
That was the one Scribner's error that I caught and I don't remember.
Won't change your vote?
I don't think this will change your vote, Mr. President. I think what you voted on will be fine, so. Was there a date on that that I needed to, first adopted?
So we just need to show it was first adopted today and then move from there?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. You don't need anything from us.
We can move forward, sir. Ready to go to the next one? Okay, thank you. G. Resolution 24, 2021, fiscal plan for annexation. Sparks property. We haven't seen you in a while.
Let's see, a couple of weeks, maybe. This resolution was prepared by Cronin Associates for the Sparks annexation. If you did receive a copy of the fiscal plan and as written, it does not pose fiscal impact hardship on the town. So it's up for adoption. It's not a public hearing, so you can vote on it. If you have any questions, just let me know. I'll be happy to answer them.
Hey, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 24, 2021.
Second.
Motion and a second. Courtney, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
All right. Motion's been passed, five to zero. Thank you. Okay. 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 The next item is ordinance 25. This is the actual ordinance annexing this Sparks property. Public hearing was held on September 1st. Hey, have a motion?
Make a motion to pass Resolution 25, 2021. Have a motion and a second.
Courtney, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
All right. Motion's been passed, five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Planner. Aye. Ordinance 26, 2021.
Can you give me just a minute for that, please?
Pardon?
Can you give me just a minute, please?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mark. Aye. Is the next on the list, ordinance 26, 2021. Designating the town's purchasing agency and purchasing rules. Mark?
This came before the council on September 15th for first read and it's now up for adoption tonight. What this does is it cleans up some language from 1998 where specifically we were not engaged with stormwater and so the stormwater department, this allows them the ability to purchase legally.
Okay.
Does that mean there were some things being purchased illegally?
I've signed for all of them. That made them legal, sir.
Make sure.
Yeah, I was a co-signer.
Mark?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 26-2021 for purchasing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Courtney, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
All right. Motion's been passed, five to zero. Thank you.
We'll try to keep the comments brief. Met with the department heads Monday. Fire department reported 45 runs for the week, 1,532 for the year. They're up 295 runs from last year. They had one working house fire and they've assisted with five runs and this week they started fire prevention week. Stormwater department, unexpected water piping failures at town hall have been repaired. Storm structures at Indiana and Marion and Broadway and Cross have been repaired. DPW is replacing sidewalks and ADA ramps at those locations. Roof drains and repairs that will be cleaned and repaired by the end of the, I don't know what this means, but by the end of the preparation for winter. Yeah, I knew, yeah. 11 new single-family dwellings have been issued in the last 30 days. Kensington Section 3 is currently placing HMA. Thank you. Goodwill site is complete and they are expected to open October 14th. The physical therapy building at the Old Danner site is now moving forward quickly and there have been HVAC repairs in the DAC. They'll be getting ready soon. I apologize, I thought they were done. Planning department, preparing packets for Plan Commission, RDC meetings next week. Commercial development.
Nancy Levitt.
Hi.
Chris Gerald.
Hi.
David Winters.
Hi.
Hi. Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you. Item J, ordinance 28, 2021, Subdivision Control Ordinance Text Amendment.
Okay, this is a text amendment to the subdivision control ordinance by changing who approves final plans. The way the ordinance is written now, it's, it's, it's a decision that's up to the applicant or the developer. So in having discussions with the Plan Commission and others, the Plan Commission would like to see the final approvals come before them, even though it's not a public hearing. They want to review the plans. Plus, it, uh, it, it expedites the process. So we may have, at least there's a schedule, a deadline, there's a, you know, a process, so it's going to make it go quicker. So anyway, Plan Commission held the public hearing, um, on September 13th, and they are sending a favorable recommendation to you for this amendment.
So Lisa would, as, as this is going through that process and, and that final plat would come back, this would be one of the mechanisms for, like, the Plan Commission to be able to, again, hold a developer accountable for at least layout and things like that? I mean, I know that, you know, building materials and stuff like that, Barry will, will stick Barry on them and stuff like that. That's fine, but this would just be that original?
Yeah, and it's something that, that staff's going to review to make sure that they've complied with their preliminary approval, and if it's a PUD, it's to ensure that they've complied with that as well. But it allows the, it's going to allow the Plan Commission to look at it and see that they are being complied with as well.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Are you happy with this?
I, yes, I'm, I'm kind of the one that initiated it.
Okay, well, I thought so, but I just wanted to double check.
I'm very happy about it.
Yeah, okay.
It's going to be a good thing.
Thank you.
Uh, I move that we adopt ordinance 28, 2021, amending the subdivision control ordinance of the town.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Courtney, please take the roll.
Hi.
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 Hi, motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you.
Sick of seeing me up here?
Had to replace the carpet.
Don't bother, Ms. Planner.
Well, there you go.
Okay, K, ordinance 29, 2021, Request for Annexation. Ms. Planner?
Okay, uh, this, um, ordinance was introduced on September the 15th. This is a property that is on County Road 50 North. Um, the property owner is Constance Goodlander. This is directly across the street from a property that was annexed earlier in the year, Rex Wilson. Um, she is wanting to connect to public water, so that is the purpose of her making this application. This is a public hearing, so you'll need to open it up for any public comment.
The meeting is open for public comment. No public comment? Meeting's closed. Carry on.
Okay, that's all I have for you. All right, thank you.
Any more comments? Any motion?
This doesn't get adopted until October the 20th. It'll be on the next, um, agenda
Oh, so we don't have it now?
For adoption. This was just the public hearing.
Okay, we're good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Hell, ordinance 30, 2021, 2022 Budget. Mr. President, Mark?
In your packet, you'll find the, uh, 2022, uh, budget that has been, uh, presented to the council during, uh, numerous work studies and council meetings, and this is the final, um, final document, and it comes up for a public hearing tonight, so it will need to be, uh, gavelled open, public comment taken, and then gavel closed once the comments are finished.
Any comments? So we don't need a motion for this?
No, sir, but you'll still need to gavel the meeting open, the public hearing open.
Public meeting is open? Public hearing is open? Any comments? Public hearing is closed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Ordinance 31, 2021, 2022 Salary Ordinance.
Mr. President, your packet tonight, just for a, uh, first or introduction only, is the 2022 Salary Ordinance. Uh, this includes all the salaries that we've spoke, uh, spoken of during numerous work studies and council meetings. Uh, this is, um, uh, what the council, um, had approved when it came to, um, salaries and, uh, additional positions. Again, this is just for introduction only tonight.
All right. And Capital Expenditure Request, Pool Painting. That you, Willie?
Yes, it is. Pages in this packet.
Hundred and fifty-one, if you count the work stuff.
Prep you guys on this last meeting that this would be coming. We already started the project and it was approved, but this is the, the dollar amount. Um, it did come in a little bit higher, uh, because he says the worst pool is ever done, so.
I saw him do a lot of work.
It's pretty now. I, I walked through the bowl, uh, did like a final walkthrough with them, and, uh, it's 10 times better. All the slick spots are gone. They sanded the tops, then added sand and the paint. Um, they used 38, was it? Yeah, 38,000 PSI to blast all the old paint off, which is cra- he had like a gun. It's pretty cool, but, uh, it's all done now, and we're working on the next phases. Uh, diving board is, I think, where we're going to go, because the prices went up on the climbing wall. It's like doubled. So I'll be bringing that back to you, and, uh, I think we're looking at some feature upgrades and stuff, too, but so I'll bring all that back when I get there, but I'm still under my 144 right now, so.
Okay, um, how long will that last?
Um, they say five years, but, uh, I think Plainfield paints theirs every three to four, so, and we probably, because of where we are in the lifespan, probably need to think about three to four as well, so. And we, we did really well at the pool this year, around 25,000, so, over. So, I mean, if you think about it, that goes back into, into the general fund, so it's really, it's paying for itself. It's just a maintenance fee, so.
Hey, any comments?
Get that rough spot sanded down there in the lazy river.
Oh, yeah.
I have a motion. Willie needs a motion.
Make a motion to pass the capital expenditure request for pool painting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Courtney, please take the roll.
Hi.
Nancy Levitt.
Hi.
Chris Gerald.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you very much, Willie.
Thank you.
Round the horn.
I'll try to keep the comments brief. Um, met with the department heads Monday. Uh, fire department reported 45 runs for the week, uh, 1,532 for the year. They're up 295 runs from last year. They had one working house fire, and they've assisted, um, with five runs, and this week they started Fire Prevention Week. Stormwater Department, uh, unexpected water piping failures at Town Hall have been repaired. Uh, storm structures at Indiana and Marion, Broadway and Cross have been repaired. DPW is replacing sidewalks and ADA ramps at those locations. Roof drains and repairs that will be cleaned and repaired by the end of the, um, I don't know what this means, but in, by the end of the preparation for winter, so. Yeah, I knew, yeah. Eleven new single-family dwellings have been issued in the last 30 days. Kensington Section 3 is currently placing, uh, HMA. Thank you. Goodwill site is complete, and they are expected to open October 14th. The physical therapy building at the Old Danner site is now moving forward quick, quickly, and there have been HVAC repairs in the DAC. Uh, they'll be getting ready soon. I apologize. I thought they were done. Uh, planning department, uh, preparing packets for Plan Commission RDC meetings next week. Commercial development potential at 200 East and the Roundabout. Uh, she's working with Hoffmann's, uh, on the property next to Curtis Motor Motors for possible annexation. Uh, we did hold the Comp Plan Steering Committee, um, last week and received one new annexation application on 50 North. Community engagement, Madison's reporting that, um, um, there are 97 new posts. We have 180 new followers for our website. Total followers are 4,444, 146 comments, 862 likes or, or link clicks. Um, we are officially now Facebook verified. Uh, we have a blue check mark next to our name. Main benefit of the verification check mark is that it will signify to users that are, that they're, your Facebook page is legitimate, so if an unauthorized person creates an imposter page, um, the lack of the badge will signal the users that it may not be authentic. And she has filled out the submission form and working on getting an access to local alerts on Facebook. Uh, this page would serve a, um, single city or municipality will have the option to send notifications to all page followers living within 150 kilometers of the page's city or page followers living in specific neighborhoods within the page city. Notifications will be sent to page followers, followers will not be sent to ones living outside of our city. If she chooses to send a local alert to people living in an area, uh, they, she'll be able to drop a pin and customize the size and radius down to a minimum of one mile to send local alerts to people living in a specific neighborhood. I don't know what that means, but it sounds pretty cool. Park, uh, to-do list, Cody Perkins, their new employee, um, starts today. That was Monday. Winter land setup starts this Friday. Pool winterizing will take place this week. They're working on trunk or treat details. Met with Banning about mapping of Aiken for Football Tower. Spraying for the winter, aerating and seed next week. Uh, met about the locker room upgrades. Maybe those will occur in November. As the assistant town manager, he's been working on organizing the next traffic meeting, uh, working on that silly fountain, uh, again. Um, been, uh, he's touched base with the company for the roundabout sign to try and get a timeline. Uh, he is working on adding a microphone to this room, and we're still waiting on a state permit to clean up the Fiedelt Hill for the banner signs or the signs and banners. Wastewater, uh, working on monthly report. Um, VAC 5, lift stations, working on those, uh, working on mapping. Ran the belt press three days this week, lift station checks. Said one person on vacation, and they've been working on mowing. DPW had their quarterly meeting with his employees on, uh, October 4th. Um, he's been working on Heritage Drive to get curb gutter issue replacements. He's notified the property owners, but will be notifying again due to weather delays. Uh, will need to complete Prior 2 Mill and Overlay project, which is the next, uh, project we have, uh, for paving. Uh, he has posted a new leaf pickup schedule on the website under DPW. He's working to update the Pazer rating and the pavement asset management plan for NDOT. Beginning the process of establishing a new Title 6 ADA Transition Plan to remain eligible for federal NDOT funding. It's going to be beginning, beginning to install no parking sign as, in accordance with Title 7 of Town Ordinance. Um, this is being done to conduct, this is being conducted to alleviate cost of manpower. Materials of painting in every no parking area, yellow. Intersections and fire hydrant areas will be painted when new method of painting is established. Uh, paint, in addition to signage, should reiterate the importance of no parking in the areas. And last but not least, and I cannot find it, Jim, I'm very sorry, um, when is the safe trick-or-treating? That was right. If you're not familiar, in years past, the police chief sets the, um, times for trick-or-treating and, uh, for safe trick-or-treating in our town, so he's established that.
Anybody listening online, that was, uh, the 31st, from 5:30 to?
8:30, yeah, sorry. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mark?
So, um, I first wanted to, uh, uh, thank Kelly Di Benedetto. She had, uh, put together the community awards banquet, even though I was unable to attend. I had a number of people reach out to me and indicate that it was a fantastic evening, so, uh, kudos to, uh, you and the Chamber of Commerce. So thank you very much. Uh, also wanted to thank, um, uh, Barry and Andy. Um, I had a citizen contact me about a, uh, stormwater drain on Broadway and Cross. Uh, brought it to Barry's attention, and, uh, very quickly he, uh, uh, fix, fixed the issue. So those guys have, uh, done a good job, and I appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'll, I'll, uh, copy your sentiment. I was thinking about that this week, and just another reminder how great of a town this is. And I highly recommend, don't hold your pen down, because you might write on your pant leg, like I just did. Um, sorry. Uh, so, yeah, great job, Kelly. I, I heard it was really good. Congratulations, saw the winners. I wasn't able to be there either. Uh, college visit days are upon us, so, um, but I, uh, yeah, great things happening here and really happy about that. Uh, I was gonna, uh, call someone out. Danny Smith, you're the, uh, new program director, right? Is that the correct title? At Leadership Hendricks County, so congratulations on that. Great organization. Um, and then, uh, I know I, I speak a lot about certain things. I'm going to be really brief. I want to reiterate that I hope that this town never thinks about doing what the city of Greenwood just did today, and that's requiring their employees to prove that they're vaccinated or wear a mask. Uh, it's very disappointing. Yep. Yep, very disappointing. So as far as I'm concerned, we're never going to implement anything like that here, as long as I have a say or we have a say. Um, so anyway, that's all I'm going to say on that tonight. Thank you.
Um, I just want to, to give kudos again to Kelly for the beautiful event Saturday night, the black and white ball, and everything was nicely done. And then also, she stopped by my house and gave me some door prizes for my class reunion. I graduated from Danville 50 years ago, and so, yeah, it's not funny. It's not funny. And we had, we had a great big, huge party out at the Cartledge Barn, gave away door prizes, and, um, we had one of the Danville Metropolitan Police Department's finest be our security, and it was really fun. It wasn't, it wasn't the chief, but, um, it was, it was fun, and the door prizes were great. Thank you, Kelly. And also, how's your son? He hurt himself in the football game and has to have surgery on his foot. I understand. Okay, so surgery for Christopher to Benedetto tomorrow morning at 7:30. And, but he did get to go to Boots and Bling, which was the privately-held homecoming dance, because the, the school canceled it, and then the parents put their own on, out at the sheep and goat barn, and it sounds, you know, not that great, but it's beautiful. So, we had my class reunion 50 years later, you know, just down around the corner from there at the Cartledge Barn, and none of the kids from the senior class came to our class reunion. I was afraid they might, because we had beer there. Then they would have had to see what they're going to look like in 50 years, and it would have been too frightening. So they stayed away. So I want to report that that, that did not happen. And good luck to Christopher tomorrow morning. That's all.
I can't top any of that, so. Gonna back away.
You don't have any videos of her dancing?
I did dance.
Yes. All right, I agree with, uh, everything everybody said here. Dave?
Mr. President, can we, Mr. President, can we have a point of personal privilege real quick, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, Superintendent Lofton, I believe, would like to introduce, uh, his new employee. We've been remiss in having that done.
So I just wanted to introduce Adam Reed officially to the council. So, um, you'll see a lot of differences. He's done a fantastic job, really forward-thinking. I don't have to tell him to do stuff on this building. Um, for the last 10 years, this building's been pretty tough to deal with, but the water leak that we had downstairs, um, I initiated that water leak. We tried to be proactive for the first time in 10 years. I sent him downstairs and I said, "Cut that, you know, insulation off, and let's go ahead and fix that little drip." When he took it off, it turned into a geyser. So then we found three other leaks, but this is Adam Reed. You, you can put a name with a face now. If you see him around town, you-
We now see a person. We've been waiting for you.
So he's, he's done a fantastic job, and, and you guys will notice the difference at Town Hall, because he's really good at taking care of things around here.
Welcome.
Welcome, Adam. Welcome.
Thank you.
Don't listen to Barry. Anybody else, Mark?
President, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, move to approve the claim docket.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Meeting's adjourned.